Called the Board of Supervisors into session for the Monday, March 28th, 2022 meeting. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak? See no one in chambers. Do we have anyone on Zoom? It will move to the proclamations. We have one proclamation. The Week of the Young Child, and Supervisor McDonough will present that.
The Week of the Young Child, whereas Dubuque County Early Childhood, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 2nd through April 8th, 2022. And whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early learning experiences for all children and families within our state, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services. And whereas the future of our state depends on the quality of the early childhood experiences provided to young children today, preparing them for school success and brighter outcomes. And whereas high-quality early childhood services represent a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Dubuque County, Iowa, on behalf of the staff and the citizens of Dubuque County, do hereby proclaim the week of April 2nd to April 8th, 2022, as the Week of the Young Child in Dubuque County, Iowa, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children in our community in order to build a brighter future for Iowa by giving every child an opportunity to succeed in life.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation.
And I will second. Have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Here is, we have no one here to speak on behalf of the proclamation or anyone online.
Well, I currently sit on their Board of Directors. And Dubuque County Early Childhood, I know Supervisor Wickham has served on that Board of Directors previously for several years. So this is something that they're also going to be asking the City of Dubuque to issue a proclamation. And there's just some dynamic work being done there focused on early learning. So it's a great organization, Dubuque County Early Childhood.
Good, great. We'll move forward to the approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 21st, 2022.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the meeting of March 21st, 2022. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we'll go to consent items. We have no consent items for this meeting. Of procurement procedures, proof of publication. Pardon? Have the receipt of quotes for the HMA resurfacing, culvert replacement and grading on Haber Corn Road, Project LFM-P23 (4-7X-31).
Is there just one bid or two bids?
There's two.
Two bids. Okay, the first bid is from River City Paving. And the total project cost is $1,997,884.06.
Bond attached with that, Anthony or?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Was there a bond attached?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
And the second and final bid is from Top Grade Excavating. And their bid is for $1,993,968.55. And their bid bond is attached as well.
Very competitive.
Very.
I'll make a motion to receive the bids and refer them to the county engineer for his review and recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to forward the bids to the county engineer for his determination. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have receipt of quotes for bridge replacement on Hickory Valley Road, Project LFM-B23 (02-7X-31).
The first bid is from Taylor Construction. And their bid amount is $455,906.60. And their bid bond is attached as well. And we have one more bid. And the second and final bid is from Jim Schrader Construction. The bid amount is $599,641.26. And that's final bid.
Motion to receive the bids and refer them to the county attorney for advice.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to receive the bids and refer to the county engineer. His determination. Any discussion on that? That will, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we go to the receipt of quotes for bridge replacement on North Bangston Road, Project L-B23 (3-73-31).
Two bids? The first bid is from Taylor Construction in the amount of $345,230.75. And they also have their bid bond in place here. And then the second and final bid is from Jim Schrader Construction in the amount of $448,821.20. And they have their bid on as well. That's final bid.
Good. I'll make a motion to receive the bids and refer those to the county engineer for his review and recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to forward the bids to the county engineer for his decision. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Carries. Next, we have a notice to bidders. Bridge replacement on Chesterman Road, Project L-B23 (5-73-31). That would be for bid opening on Monday, April 18th at the nine o'clock board meeting. Bids would have to be in by 3:00 PM on April 14th.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice to bidders.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to prove the notice to bidders for the Chesterman Road project. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a notice to bidders. HMA resurfacing culverts, new single box on Goose Hill Road, Project LFM-P23 (2-7X-31). And also as a bid deadline of April 14th at 3:00 PM with the bids being opened on April 18th at 9:00 AM.
Make a motion to approve the notice to bidders.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to prove the notice to bidders for the resurfacing and box, single box on Goose Hill Road. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we go to notice to bidders. Culverts, new single box, HMA resurfacing on Thunder Road, Project LOST-23 (2-73-31). That also has a deadline for bidders at 3:00 PM Thursday, April 14th, with the bids being opened at the Monday, April 18th, 9:00 AM, Board of Supervisors meeting.
Motion to approve the notice of bidders for the Thunder Road project.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to prove the notice to bidders for the Thunder Road project. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have public hearings. Proof of publication for the public hearing.
Motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a public hearing, the amendment to the FY 2022 Secondary Roads Five-Year Construction Program and Fiscal Year 2023 Secondary Roads Five-Year Construction Program. Anthony.
Can I share my screen then? Okay. Says host disabled participant, screen sharing. Okay, hopefully this is gonna work. Okay, well, to start off with the amended fiscal year 22, five-year construction program. Pretty much anything that we're bidding out for fiscal year 23 projects, we have to amend into the fiscal year 22 program. Anything that we let, anything we let before July 1st has to be in the 22 program. So that's, that's what we're doing today with the amendment. So all of these projects that we were doing today and then everything we've done in the last several weeks, we're having to put into the 22 program, but you also see it reflected in the 23 program as well. So that's pretty much what the amendment's about. And then going into the 23 program, I'm gonna kind of go through the map itself and also walk down this list of projects here. I'll kind of go into each one and little bit of detail there. So I'm gonna actually click through the map here, starting in fiscal year 23. Our first project is gonna be for the Hickory Valley Bridge Replacement, which we just received today. And hopefully this is gonna work. I've got a kind of interactive map showing each, each project, what we're doing this. And so Hickory Valley is a Little Pony Trust Bridge that we'll be replacing. Will pass its age. And then the Hammerin' Road Bridge Replacement. Let's look at what's going on there. Pretty old structure we're replacing. The Clear Creek Road Bridge Project. That one is actually, it's a, it's a BR, or Bridge Replacement Funding through the STBG, funding through RPA. So it's actually gonna be built into next year, but it'll be, it's programmed into this year. Here's what Clear Creek looks like. We're not replacing the pretty ones. Does that pop up?
Well, you said the one was pretty old. I wasn't sure what the emphasis was on.
There. There you go. Now it's not working. There it is. Yeah, that's a dandy. Okay, the next one is North Bangston Road. Bridge replacement. When you see old railing like that, that's, that's a, that's an antique right there. So that's, that one needs to go. Then we have the Conrad Lane Culvert Project. This is the one that has no railing on it.
Is that one just going to be a culvert, a railcar?
That one actually is probably, it's gonna be a flat car, railroad flat car. You know, we've done some of those flat car decks before. Probably gonna size out for that. We're still working on the, the final plans for that, but more like it's gonna be a flat car.
If somebody had asked me about that, I said I wasn't sure how it was.
I was trying to fit a couple of tanker culverts in there, but I just don't think the hydrology is gonna work on it. So it's gonna be probably the flat cars. And the next project is Old Massey Road Paving Project. Look at them. And then we have the Goose Hill Raker Road Project. And then we have the Thunder Road Paving Project. You'll see a kind of a common theme here. We're, we're pretty much resurfacing very deteriorated roads. We're not out of the woods yet on these roads.
I can see that.
The next project is the Haber Corn Road Paving Project.
I show old Farley Rockville as next.
Oh, yep, I missed that one.
That's right.
Tell him, beat you to it. Thank you.
Yep. So there's a look at Old Farley and Rockville Road. And then we're gonna be doing the Flame, Flanagan and James Road. That one took quite a beating over the last few years with the Highway 52 or Highway 3 project that the DOT did. And then we have a various culverts replacement around the county. Kind of throwing together a package of about four or five culverts that are, here's one example. You never want to see this. You don't want to see rock in your, in your culvert. But quite a few examples like that where the, the culverts are actually collapsed and bringing in the, in the fill of the road into the culverts. And then we have the Chestman Road Culvert Project.
You note here that that road's actually closed.
That one is closed. Actually, the landowner has a gate, or a key to the gate to get in there. It's actually a landlocked parcel back here that they have no other access to get to. And it's, at best, this is a three, probably a three-ton bridge that should not be, be carrying any kind of farm equipment across there. So this one definitely needs to go. We're trying to do this as cheaply as possible. We're gonna do this as a railroad tanker culverts. So that's really the cheapest way we can, we can do this project. And the hydrology does work out for that.
Okay, good.
And then fiscal year 24. And if you guys want me to just kind of breeze through this, let me know, or otherwise I'll keep on by detail here.
Works for me.
Fiscal year 24. Then we're looking at Old Highway all the way from Farley over to Siple Road. Then we have Bernard Road on the southern part of the county. And then we have O'Brien Road Bridge. And we have a Higginsport Road Resurfacing Project. And we have a North Cascade Road Paving Project. That was not working for me. Okay, then I'll move on to the Fish Pond Road Bridge. Then Graff Road Bridge Replacement, Bridge Replacement. Pretty much all of these bridges that we're, we're looking at here are in those 1940s to 1950s era.
There was fish in that pond.
Probably.
There's not anymore.
No.
This is Graff Road?
That was Graff Road. Yep.
There are two of them there or just?
Graff Road, there's just one. Did you see something different there?
Is that between Asbury Road and the Towneograph or?
That one is on the north end of graph, right there at Flypoints or beginning of Flypoints and Asbury Road there. And then we have the, the Claren Road Bridge Replacement. And then we have the, the Old Highway Bridge. So we're gonna, we're gonna do some deep planning, obviously, on this one. We're gonna be doing the Old Highway Bridge at the same time as the Old Highway Paving Project. So we're probably gonna bid both, both projects together to try to, you know, really emphasize the detour that's gonna have to take place on this. Obviously, this is probably one of our most major bridges in the, in the entire county. Detour is gonna have to be very important here. Right now, we're working through the deal, or with the railroad for this, this project. It's a little bit of a slow-going process, getting the permitting and the proper structure it needs. It has, has to have a specific clearance above the railing and everything, above the track. So we're, we're working through that. But this is gonna be probably one of our keystone projects for next year alongside Old Highway.
What responsibility does the railroad have at all with this transportation? I, I remember a conversation with Mark Judge in previous county engineer from a couple decades ago. And he made the comment that I, that the railroad participated in funding on some of the bridges in the past. Any comment or thought on that?
I've never heard of that before.
Maybe I heard him wrong or my memory's.
It's possible. You know that, you know, maybe they helped contribute towards no, an accurate access that they wanted to see a bridge across, you know, that maybe at that time they wanted to put some funding into.
You mentioned the bridge by the fairgrounds, right on, front of, right by your office.
Okay, that would be.
That was my memory, so.
That's very interesting. Because usually the railroad doesn't wanna, certainly doesn't, doesn't want to help with funding and it's.
Well, there'd be a lot of them, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure, they wouldn't have an ask us to pay for their viadocks where they're going over the road. They don't know if they want to pay for our roads.
I don't think they fixed one of those in the last 60, 80 years either, but.
If you fill in that hole and just make it a road across, he might not like that.
Can I ask a question about the old highway road? Now we have the, the road and then the, the bridge. When, can you be more specific other than just the fiscal year? When do you think that that is going to happen?
Well, so we'll, we'll try to bid it out like we typically do. That will be a foreign market project, which we'll schedule for probably a letting around February or March. We'll package this two, these two together as long as we can stay, stay on this timeline with dealing with the railroad.
For next summer?
For next year. So, you know, it could, it could be any time from spring through, you know, summer, late summer, just depending on the contractor. I would suspect you're gonna probably see the, the bridge contractor get in there first, build that out. And then the, the paver can come in, the pavers can come in and just take off from there.
So it'll be the summer, the spring, summer of 2023?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And you're projecting that as over $5 million between the bridge and the pavement?
Yep. Yes, we are.
And that's one of the roads that we've talked about for broadband as a pilot program, right?
Yeah. Now, that would be, I'm not anticipating those kind of funds in my $5 million, so that would be added on to anything extra. I am hoping to do some, some light realignment. I would love to do some realignment of Junction 21 curve right there. That's a real unsafe location. It's actually one of our high-risk railroad curves. And actually, the DOT, if you remember, a few years ago, they stepped in and helped put a friction surface on that road, that stretch. There are some pretty good grants out there. There's a traffic safety improvement program that you can go for about a half million dollars on improvements to high-risk curves. And that's why I'm gonna be working on that for this year to, to apply for that grant. I think it'll stand a good shot at scoring well for that. So that's, that's one of my, as far as the whole, old highway paving project goes, that's one of my key improvements I'd like to make to it.
If we wanted to do broadband there. What is, do you know what the timing is on that? Is there still time to talk about that?
As far as getting materials or?
Well, just that, that is not, has not been made a decision yet whether we're going to do that for, you know, to put cable.
Correct. I mean, we still have time and we, we won't be developing these plans until late summer, early fall. So we've got time to bring, you know, the IT director in and, and the county auditor and those that we've had discussions with. And kind of figure out how we're gonna proceed with this. So I would say over the next couple of months, we should be talking about that.
I know you had talked about when we're replacing these bridges, we should be putting conduit in that they can run. Are we doing that with any of these projects that we just discussed or?
Yeah, certainly on key locations like this, yes. Like so, Old Highway Bridge, we will plan conduit in the rail.
I mean, the bridges that we just approved for like Harvard, Hickory Valley Road, North Bangston Road.
Some of those, we have not been doing that because they're just out, kind of on just, you know, some low-volume gravel roads. So we haven't added that in. You know, that would be some extra funding that we'd have to kind of anticipate for that.
How much extra just?
Conduit. I'm not real familiar with conduit costs. Probably not significant. And it's something we could probably change order in pretty easily. You know, we, we have time to get to the construction phase and change order that in.
I'd like to see us have a, a work session on, I mean, it doesn't have, what you're doing here today is, is amending in, in the five-year plan, right? But so, but I think we want to have a work session about this issue so that we don't let time pass us by if that is something we want to explore to do any conduit work while we're out there.
I agree. Yep. Okay, let's see, the thing, next project was McAndrews and Prairie Creek Road. And there's a look at Prairie Creek Road. The McAndrews. Now, this is one of those projects that could go a couple of different directions. You know, this could be a basic resurfacing project. We've also talked about this possibly being a bypass for freight traffic from Sundown Road to 151. I would, I would probably need to add in some, some costs to do that, to get some extra right-of-way and, and, and build it, build the structure for, for the freight traffic. But I think this is something we should take a really close look at for, for getting traffic, you know, back and forth. You know, it's, that's just gonna be a constant problem we're gonna deal with. This might be sort of a cheaper solution versus an entire, you know, new grade like what the Southwest Material did. You know, we do have an alignment to, to kind of take us there. We just have to build it a little more, you know, stout for that, for that kind of traffic.
Beef it up a little bit.
Yep.
Definitely, very be interested in exploring that and.
Then that could be a truck route.
Yes, yep.
Currently missing that, and that's been some of the monastery road issues that we've been hearing in.
Yep. Yep. I think that'd be a good compromise to get traffic back and forth through there. So I'd like to look at that. Okay, then we have the old Worthing, or Old Worthington Road Bridge Replacement. So now we're getting to these older bridges that, they don't actually have terrible embargoes on them as far as weight limits. But we have a lot of these structures that have shallow footings and they're starting to get undermined. This one specifically has a shallow pier. It's, it's called a unknown foundation is what we specify it as in the, in the Sims program. But these are, these are projects that are bridges that we, we inspect and we probe around these footings and the abutments as well. And a lot of times you find a lot of scour holes around these. And so these are, these are some structures we're trying to focus on as we're getting away from those like five ton, ten tons that we've been replacing over the last years. Now we're getting in these structures that they rate a little bit better, but they have foundation issues that we need to pay attention to. And the next bridge is the Coke Road Bridge. I think it's Coke or is it Koch? I'm not sure which one it is. Similar situation, just a little smaller bridge, but you know, kind of an unknown foundation depth to it. And then we have this English Mill Road Bridge Replacement. This one, you know, substructure-wise is not bad, but structurally, it's, it's got a lot of issues. It's these, these precast deck panels that have no transverse tying to each other, so that's, it's not rating very well. So this, this is an important bridge right next to the quarry there at River City.
Wasn't that bridge just replaced within the last ten years?
Um.
Used to be an iron-rail bridge.
I think so. You can tell these, these deck panels were probably brought in from somewhere and they were, they were put in there. They didn't have the, the, the post-tensioning tying of each, of each deck panel. So each deck panel is like about a three-foot section, and you're supposed to post-tension them and tie them together so they work as one system. Each one is working on their own because they don't have this, this tying system to them. So that's, that's something we have to take a serious look at. And then on the fiscal year 25, when then we have the, the Graff Road Paving Project.
Going to that, back to that Graff Road Bridge, isn't there two bridges on that when you come from Five Points? You hit that first ditch, there's a little creek there, there's a.
I think there's a little covert there.
Second one there, I thought there's.
I think there's a little box covert there or something like that.
Box cover, enough of a bridge or box cover that never got out and looked at it.
Yeah, we just have one bridge on there that is currently rated. And I think it's at thirty-two tons. Yeah, thirty-two tons embargo. And then as we do that paving project, if there are other deteriorated structures, we'll take a look at the two. And then we have the Lions Road Bridge, Bridge Replacements. There are actually two, two bridges down together. Example of the north one right there. And then we have the New Mallory Road Paving Project. Conditions getting a little bit better. And then we have the Humky Road Paving Project. This one's gonna be maybe a little more expensive than what I'm estimating there because we're gonna have some, you know, some slope improvements we're gonna make on that road, that road and sometimes there's some deep ditches on that road. Then we have the Thunder Bridge, Thunder Road Bridge Replacement. You can see the rebar on the, the face there. That's what salt does to these bridges. And then we have the other Southmount Road Paving Project. Not pretty. Then we have Simon Road Paving Project. Not too bad in the center. You, you can see quite a few of these, these halfway decent steel code roads. They're losing their edges already. So you can see that's what's going on there. And then what happens? They, they just keep losing into the, into the lane itself. We're trying to get ahead of those. And then we have the Girl Scout Road Paving Project. That's what's happening there. You know, you get, you start losing your edge and you start losing the center of the lane right there. And then we have the, the Finley's Landing Road Paving Project. And then the Flanagan Road Bridge Replacement. Then the, the other Fish Pond Road, the south one, replace that bridge. And then getting into fiscal year 26, we have the, the Old Castle Road Paving Project. And we have the, the Prayer Road, James, James Meyer Road Paving Project. So a little more emphasis around the, the Dyrzil area. Certainly with what's going on with the Field of Dreams. You know, those are gonna be some important projects. And we have the, the Driscoll Road Paving Project. See. So we've got about five years ahead of us of these, these deteriorated silco roads that are, that are our problem. We're kind of digging out the hole of the bridges, but now we're, we're starting to have to really focus on these, these types of roads. Then we have the Hawkins Road Paving Project. And then the Carney Road Paving Project. Cameron Road Paving Project. Oakland Farms Road, that's one, that's where that one enters. That one's gonna be a big one. That's gonna be our highlight project for that year where we're hoping to use our DMATS funding for that. And that'll be a major reconstruction project, recreating those hills and widening out the road. And then we have the, the Hush Road Bridge Replacement. Another antique. There it is. And the fiscal year 27, I just, I never put a lot of stock into that one, but I throw a few projects in there that I know we can achieve. You know, that's, that one's so far out there and funding's gonna change, so conditions of roads and bridges will change. So I don't give that a lot of seriousness, but to start off with, we have the Fairway Road Bridge Replacement. And we have Skyline Road. So now we're starting to get into, trying to get into a better cycle of replacing these, these roads. So I, I feel like by fiscal year 27, we're gonna be resurfacing roads that are, that are better structurally, that we're not losing the edges. Roads aren't falling apart. You know, I, I think we'll be in better shape by then. And then we have the St. Joe's Prairie Road Bridge Replacement. The Benefil, Bennettville Road Bridge Replacement. And as you see, the, the wing here actually fell off in the, in the crack. And then the Hanan Road Bridge Replacement. Pretty big structure. And finally, the North Cascade Road Bridge Replacement. And that would be one of our last Pointy Trust Bridges, which that will make me very happy to, to kind of see those go. So that's it for the five-year plan.
We had talked about the one that was damaged with the flood. I don't remember what road it was on, south of Farley.
Okay, yes.
Think of it for life, you know, on John's Creek or? Like Atchison or?
Wefric.
Lefrich Road, Lefrich.
Yeah, that one's not currently in the five-year plan, obviously. That one is a, you know, it was a flood-damaged bridge, low-volume road. It's probably at that time, you know, probably fifteen to twenty vehicles a day on that, on that road. The detour is pretty short around it. At one time I did have it in the plan and a previous board, you know, didn't want to see us spend the money on, on something that low volume. So we, we pulled it at that time, that time, so.
You had talked about doing a low-water crossing or something that would be relatively cheap. I was just wondering if.
That's something we could still look at. We could do a low-water crossing. I don't always like to do it on a main Class A road, but the traffic count seems to lend itself towards a, a design of that. You know, you just have to make sure your, your signs are posted for flood events that you don't, don't enter those areas. Typically, you see them on Class B roads or dead-end Class A roads. This one is, you know, a through, through road, intersection, intersection, Class A road.
That's one that you couldn't do the railroad cars on or?
I don't think so. The, the hydrology is pretty big there. You know, there's a reason why that, that bridge was taken out. The, when we got that big flood back in it was 2012 or something like that, it wiped it out. It was a pretty good scour hole there. So bridge, bridge size would probably be in that hundred-foot range. So you're probably gonna be, I have, probably close to half a million dollars for that type of project.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But low water, low, low volume, low-water crossing, you know, we could probably be in that fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range.
And that wouldn't be so bad. At least they could get across with farm equipment. That seems to be what the biggest complaint of is that.
Yep.
Thing else, Ann?
My question is, you know, we are gonna go to a, a public hearing, obviously, but what, how different would this look if we lose our local option sales tax? I mean, I'm looking at big price tags, fifteen million dollars in '23 and fifteen million dollars in '24.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a great point. So I forgot to go over the summary. So fiscal year 23, we're looking at thirty-four miles of paving, fifteen point seven million dollars worth of construction. At least half of that is local option sales tax.
And like, it's like what, four point five million somewhere in that neighborhood?
Right. That's what we, that's what we bring in for revenue per year. Now, we, we have a balance. It's a little bit bigger than that, so we're spinning that down. So in this particular fiscal year, it's about half of that is gonna be coming out of local options or, yeah, local option sales tax. So, but future years, you know, we, we depend on about a four and a half million dollars revenue spread for us for, for projects. You know, fiscal year 24 is gonna be another big year. Now, there are some foreign market funding that's built into that one, so that's, that's not all local there. But if you get into like fiscal year 25 and fiscal year 26, there's quite a bit of local funding built into those, those years. At least a third of that is gonna be that local option sales tax.
And we would stand loose forty percent of that funding.
Yeah.
Certain, correct?
I would, yeah, I would have to greatly revise this, this program if we lost that, that stream of funding.
Well, I don't think they've determined what they're going to do.
The initial discussion was like six tenths of a cent. Four tenths, so the six tenths would still go to the, we could still put to the roads, but the four tenths. Let's go to property tax reduction, but this whole one penny is going to property tax reduction already.
Yeah, that might, that might be a topic that, for a work session too, and bring in conservation and Brian Preston and talk about getting ready for it. That, I mean, we need to do something about the local option sales tax. It's still, it's still progressing in the Senate.
Well, here's something else to take note of too, with our bridge, bridge and paving project, projects that have come in, you know, we're seeing about twenty to twenty-five percent increase in prices. Last week, we had an RPA meeting that we need to discuss what the infrastructure bill is doing for our various, you know, federal aid funds. Overall, the, the funding is gonna provide about thirty percent increase to counties and cities and, and the states. Now, when you drill down on that, what they mentioned was, once you get into the STBG funds, which is what supports our bridges and roads, it's only ten percent.
Ten percent what?
Ten percent increase.
Increase, okay.
So the thirty percent is more into other like discretionary grants for, you know, other types of projects that may or may not apply to us. So with the ten percent increase in, in our, in our STBG and BR funding, we're eating that up with inflation. That's gone.
And our road levies already maxed out.
Correct.
It's at the highest allowed by state.
Yep. And so pretty much what I'm showing you here is, I, I think we're, we're a lot better off in most counties where we're able to, I think, be pretty close to par and try to stay stable with our county. But we're not necessarily making a lot of headway with, you know, everybody would like to see reconstructed roads and, you know, build, you know, different types of improved corridors. You know, we're, we're just able to kind of stay afloat of what we're doing here. If we lose any ground on that with, with our revenues, you know, we're, we're, we're going backwards.
Anything else? Or we can go to public hearing?
A motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are in public hearing. Do we have anyone that would wish to address the board regarding the secondary roads, five-year construction program? Remandment to the program. Sir, could you walk up and give your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Rick Boffeli from Epworth, and I like following up on these county road bridges, which it's a tremendous improvement over the last five, eight years. But my question is, redoing these county roads that do not support shoulders and with a heavy farm equipment and so forth. That's why we see a lot of edges breaking off. And I was just curious, is there a way that we can get away from a problem like that?
Well, one of the, obviously, the major issues in Dubuque County is narrow roads. You know, we don't have an abundance of right-of-way on these, these different types of roads. So pretty much what our funding allows is to do basic overlays of the existing structures out there, existing roads. We try to do some spot improvements on really narrow areas, whether it be with our own maintenance crew or make that a part of the project. Like Goose Hill Road will be an example where we're, we're doing some, some four-slip widening. But really, the funding only allows to kind of do some basic resurfacing and use the existing road as structure to build upon. You know, usually we're putting about three lifts of asphalt down to build a new structure on top of it. But there's not a lot of funding left over to really do major widening to improve that situation, like you said. It's, it, it is definitely a problem. You know, it's, equipment's not getting more narrow out there.
I think the state actually just increased the weight limit allowance.
Did they pass that?
I know that's likely. I mean.
I think.
I don't know that it passed yet, but I know it's.
Well, so that's gonna be a real problem too. And I, I'd heard that it was actually being pulled back because the DOT was assessing that it was gonna, it was gonna cost about two million dollars, I think, statewide with all the bridges in the county. Maybe it was only the, the DOT bridge, I can't recall, but they're all gonna have to be reload rated.
All the bridges.
All the bridges. At about eight hundred bucks a pop. So you think about, we have about two hundred and twenty bridges in this county. We're gonna have to reevaluate all of those bridges for ninety thousand pounds versus eighty thousand pounds. So there was, and then that doesn't count in the, you know, unintended consequences of adding extra weight on these narrow, narrow shoulder roads. Same issue, you know, that's gonna deteriorate roads a lot quicker. So I guess I had heard maybe it was a week or so ago that, that was kind of being pulled back a little bit, but I could be out of date on that too.
Well, Senator Dan Zumbach was pretty serious about it at the beginning of the session and told me it was, I mean, pretty much for sure. But I know that all changes over time, so. Well, we have a call this week and I guess that'll be one thing. Ed, can you just make a note of that? We're gonna make sure we get the status on that.
Do we have anyone else that would like to address, speak at the public hearing? Anyone on Zoom done? Nelson Chambers, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I will second that.
Have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a resolution to approve the amended fiscal year 2022 Dubuque County Secondary Road Construction Program and the fiscal year 2023 Dubuque County Secondary Road five-year construction program.
Before we go that, I would like to take the moment just to acknowledge some of the things I've seen in the last six construction years. So one overall, you're, you and your staff do a tremendous. Uh, one overall, you're, you and your staff do a tremendous job and specifically. Um, one of the marked changes over the last decade or two is that we do all the engineering, almost all of it in-house. For both road design and bridge work with our partnership with, with Delaware County. And so that's a tremendous engineering savings versus going out to the private sector. Um, the second piece is that we don't forget the private sector. So all, most all these construction projects are, are done. And the projects are let out to the private construction companies and they do an excellent job and are very competitive as evidenced by some of the bid openings. Here today for both bridge work and, and roadway work. So, uh, really a team effort, um, from both public and private. And not sure if this is a fact, but I, it's got to be close. In at least the last six to eight years since you've arrived here, I bet we've done more miles of road and more bridge structures than ever before.
I would agree with that.
It's history.
Yeah.
And so, um, not lost on me, not lost on those that travel safely across those bridges and across those roadways. So. Um, you know, for my chair, well done and congratulations.
Thank you.
And as I always tell your team. Thank you, because you really do reflect back on, you make us look good. That is what citizens will tell me is, and they all have specific questions, but generally very, very pleased. And then that just makes us feel, I mean, I'm not digging, making roads, none of that, Anthony. So it all reflects back and we want to make sure that. You share that with your team as well.
It's definitely, uh, you know, this linear team effort, you know, it takes a great team under me to, to, to make me look good. And, uh, you guys, uh, come alongside me and, and pass these, these, these plans for me and, and these programs and allow me to. Have the funding that we have and, you know, I think it's a great linear effort amongst all of us. So we're all working in this together.
Uh, congratulate you also. Anthony, you have heard a lot of good from the citizens. And everybody notices that there's bridges getting done, that things are moving forward. So. Definitely congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to prove the resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a notice of public hearing for the amendments to the zoning ordinance. Uh, public hearing is set for April eleventh at nine AM, fourth floor supervisor's office. Regarding, uh. Appears to be several. Zoning reclassifications.
I'll make a motion to approve the notice of public hearing for the zoning ordinance changes.
Second.
Have a mo- motion and a second to approve the notice of public hearing for the amendments. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Approval of Platts, we have none. We'll move to the action items. We have a resolution to approve the necessary documents with Ermann Corporation. For the purchase of two railroad cars and one culvert. Anthony.
This is going to go in that location there on Chesterman Road, right there at Cock Springs. So these are the two railroad tank, tank cars that we're going to slide in that spot.
That reminded me of a math problem, you know, in, in school for some reason when I looked at the resolution. But I will, I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary documents with Ermann Corporation. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the necessary right of way documents for the HMA resurfacing. Culverts, new single box on Goose Hill Road, project LFM dash P two three parentheses two dash seven X dash three one. Anthony.
Okay, this one, we were gaining some extra right of way for some culvert replacements on Goose Hill. Um, so that's, uh, just pretty much some spot right of way we needed.
Motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve dress, to approve necessary right of way documents for Goose Hill Road Project. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Next, we have a resolution to approve necessary right of way documents for culverts, new single box HMA resurfacing on Thunder Road. Project LOST dash two three parentheses two dash seven three dash three one. Anthony.
Uh, similar situation, we have a spot that we're placing a culvert with a box culvert and needed some extra right of way for the, uh, the length of it.
Make a motion to approve the resolution for Thunder Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the necessary right of way documents for Thunder Road. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Actually, we have a resolution to approve plans and specifications for the bridge replacement on Chesterman Road. Project L dash B two three parentheses five dash seven three dash three one. Anthony.
Okay, now that we have a, uh, approved project in the five year plan and then we just approved the, the, the twin tankers. Um, this is the set of plans for the, uh, culvert project there at, um, Chesterman Road. So this is to replace the existing bridge with a twin nine foot by forty seven foot tank cars. Uh, so I recommend this.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the plans and specifications for Chesterman Road Project. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the plans and specifications. For the HMA resurfacing culverts, new single box on Goose Hill Road, project LFM. Dash P two three parentheses two dash seven X dash three one. Anthony.
Okay, this is an HMA resurfacing, um, RCB culverts, concrete box culverts, um, replacement project. And, uh, this is for Goose Hill Road and the short stretch of Raker Road up to the county line. For a total of seven point three two miles and I would recommend this.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. To approve the Goose Hill Road resurfacing project. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve plans and specifications for the culverts. New single box HMA resurfacing on Thunder Road, project lost dash two three parentheses two dash seven three dash three one. Anthony.
This is an HMA resurfacing project on Thunder Road with a box culvert replacement. And this is from Clear Creek Road up to Highway fifty two, uh, for a total of, uh, two point nine six miles and I would recommend this.
Motion to approve.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the plans and specifications for the resurfacing on Thunder Road. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Anthony. Next, we go to communications. Uh, we have nothing, uh, appointments. We have open vacancies for information only. Move on to personnel requisitions. Have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for full time clerk two in the recorder's office. And that is, uh, due to a resignation.
Anything unusual or anything we should know, Don?
Um, he is taking this classification from a clerk three position to a clerk two. He's done that the last several times. As he gets new employees and then they'll have the opportunity, um, for promotional opportunities as they become knowledgeable in their positions.
Is the funding budgeted for this position to change?
Actually, it'll be a cost savings for him.
Cause resignation was clerk three and this is clerk two, so.
Yep, that is correct.
Very good. I'll make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve the personnel requisition for the recorder's office.
Ask a question. Sorry to interrupt. So in the treasurer's office. What position, I understand this is the recorder, but the treasurer's office says that what position do they, the clerk position leaves all the time? What level is that?
I think it's probably mostly clerk two in there. That, they do not have any clerk ones in that office.
So the clerk two positions we have trouble keeping, is that every department?
Yeah, it's really kind of, um, I think people's opportunity to get their foot in the door. And then as the other positions open up, they, they go for a promotional opportunity, either within the department or outside of it.
Clerk four.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second to approve the full time clerk two in the recorder's office. All, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next, we have a personnel requisition for temporary part time election clerk one and two. Actually, five positions. Um, that would be for the election process.
Make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
And I will second it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the temporary election clerks. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Go into public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries and Iowa, and Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating. Or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board? Seeing no one in chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom, Don? And. I want to break. I am fine, but. Everyone good or you need a break?
That's fine. I, I would like to, um, talk about the work sessions. I, uh, before we're ready to move forward. I, I would make a motion to table both of these items. Uh, we do not, historically, at our evening meeting, we do not have work sessions. Uh, because public participation is, I mean, no one looks for it. I actually missed it myself on the agenda. Uh, Dawn drew it to my attention. So when we said our meet, our evening meeting, we typically do not have work sessions. Um, for that reason, it's hard for the public to know. And that's actually been an issue, um, at some of the, that the public's been raising. Times have changed, like in the health department meetings, that's been an issue. How do people know that the pattern changes? So. Um, that would be what I would just say to the chair, um, that these could be moved on to our very next board meeting when we tend to have. Um, participants, at least on Zoom, into the twenty, uh, twenty some participants typically, so.
Um, well, certainly the change of not having work sessions at the night meeting started when you proposed that. So my previous five or six years, we, we did. So for most of my term, we always had work sessions when we, the board supervisors generally met. And so that was more of the norm versus the last year or so. Um, that said, I'm, I'm very happy with their schedule and I think the, the public has been good with our evening meetings and the weekly, uh, Monday meetings. Um, but related to this work session, uh, we're here, it's on the agenda. And if, you know, I would think we would at least spend some time, uh, with these items on the agenda.
I might make a point of clarification. In the, in my years on the board, there have not been meetings after our business meeting work sessions. There have been work sessions throughout the day. Before our evening meeting, but it's very, very rare for us to have an evening meeting. I don't know that it's ever happened. Where at the conclusion of our business meeting, we now have work sessions about topics that are of importance to the community. And you can see on Zoom, we do not have very many public members here. So, um, that, that's what I just want to point out to the chair is that it's, it's going to be, I don't know. For greater transparency and for public input and just for folks who are trying to follow along to see what we do. I found it to be a very interesting wrinkle. And I bring that up to you because I can't, I can't call you and say, hey, Chair Potoff, what are you thinking? But it's a, it's a wrinkle and we don't usually do it this way. And, and I would, you know, that's why I've made the motion to table the work sessions. And put them into the, the light of the day when we normally would do these things.
I understand your. Motion, uh. The work sessions, I guess, that are on here have been posted. Uh. And then the first one is just basically bringing us up to date on a new purchase of service. Uh. Contract with, uh, that Ed has come up with. Uh. But, and I think we should move that forward that we can get these purchase of service applications out, that we get them back in and things can. Go and get in place on time. Uh, the second one, uh. The discussion on ERP applications, uh. That. That one I could see could. Go either way. Uh, not that there's a lot of public, there's any public input with us making decisions on ERP. Applications, but I believe there are people that do want to, uh. Be on the meeting at the time.
I just want to make sure we do it. We do our work in the, in the, in this, in the daylight when people are, are expecting us to do our work. And that they're not trying to, you know, it goes directly, I think, to something that was just discussed, I don't know. Recently, there was a Telegraph Herald editorial talking about Florida, uh, change in their, their proposed law. That you would only be publishing your notice on your own, on your own, um. County website. You wouldn't be even publishing in the paper your agenda or publishing public notice. It would only be. So just for folks to try to follow along, it isn't that we can't do these things. And if we don't take action, then there's plenty of time to talk about it all again. But I, I would like us to be a board that's predictable in terms of not. Making surprises. It's, it's easier when there's a pattern.
Right, but Mondays are not consistent. Some days we're having work sessions at eight o'clock. And some days the work sessions are afterwards. So there's no consistency as to when the work sessions are going to be either before or after. Uh, whatever, uh.
Well, I've made my motion and I don't, it sounds like there's not a second.
Would you want to? With draw the motion and. Table the six o'clock section for the ERP applications?
Well, um, I, my, my motion would be, we'll, we'll talk about the first one first. It would be to table the, um. I won't even make a motion to table the purchase of service. I can read the votes. People want to go forward with purchase of service discussion.
Yeah, we can start the discussion on the possible action, discussion and possible action regarding the fiscal year twenty three. Purchase of service application materials. Ed, do you want to give context to that?
Thank you Supervisor Potoff. Live. Um, this is Ed Raiber. In, uh, your packet, uh, in, um, based on discussions and the feedback that, uh, me and my colleagues. Have had, um. I have slightly revised the application portal that we used last September, which incorporated. The information requests that, uh, the auditor had brought to our attention that, that we should be asking for. So. Um, this application, um, perhaps consolidates a few questions, but I think ask some questions in a, you know, slightly more direct way that I think. Based on my, I'm, I'm the, I've been the person communicating with our app, our applicants and our purchase of service awardees. That, uh, I think will cause them less confusion to answer and, uh, and provide us with, uh, uh. Better responses that, that will help you, the decision makers, figure out what you want to do. So, um. What this is, is essentially what we would be, uh, making available. Those are the questions. It would look similar to this. Uh, I included a, as a new feature, a budget page that will, um. Uh, I think help our applicants know how to complete a budget in a way that, that standardizes that a little bit. We, we have a lot of different. Things that come to us. So that, this was an attempt to make it easier for the applicants. Um, if you, um, ask, uh, uh, approve releasing this, uh, in the next day to two days. Um, we'll, um, have this available on our website. I also would like to, after it's been out for about one week, I'm proposing. Um, and you can change that if you see fit. I'm proposing a, a deadline of about April twenty fifth, which is about four weeks of having this available in the community. Um, that, uh, uh, after about a week, I would try to have a, uh, advertise a, a webinar that we could have a Zoom meeting. So in case anybody has any questions, we can try to cover some stuff. This is not very different from what people have been using in the past. Uh, at least, uh, since that September change to, uh, that I think Stella and the rest of the team, uh, developed. It's pretty similar to that. So if your intention is to move forward with, uh, releasing a FY twenty three purchase of service application. Certainly, me and my colleagues are open to any changes or, or suggestions that you have. But this is in, in essence, what it, we're proposing.
Okay, needs would be for the take effect July first.
The window of funding for this would be July one through June thirtieth.
Any questions Supervisor Wick?
So this is the first year of this new process, right?
Yes.
Kind of with American Rescue Funds and.
Yes.
Pandemic, I know we had delayed some of the funding too. So. One, I'd like it. I think it's, it's clear. My question still is, maybe it's my colleagues, you can comment as well as. You know, what are the types of entities we should encourage to apply for this? And so are they in that nonprofit world? Are they both nonprofit and or for profit that could provide a valuable service to the county? Since it's different, I mean, the process is different. Do we want the applicant, applicants to be different? Not leaving anywhere, just kind of throwing it out.
As I look to my colleague, the Budget Director, I, I think our conversations are, you probably. Could purchase services from for-profit businesses. You haven't discussed that in the past. You buy trucks from, as a service from for-profit businesses. Conceivably, you could do that, I suppose. This is, we're not calling the word grant is, is not in this program or in this application. There have been times when there's been a nonprofit that has applied and their application implies that they would be. Using those to assist small businesses or, I should use that as an example. Which in fact are, are for-profit businesses. So I don't know that there's anything that, that prohibits you from doing that. Or having them apply for that. This does not necessarily say that. If you wanted to do that, you probably could.
They would have to show where it's for public purpose.
Right, the same, the same thing that, that they would all do that. Again, you're not making a grant, you're purchasing a service.
So I, I have several points to make. And I would welcome any input from our Budget Director as well, who's worked on this type of application over the, the past years. We as a board have not established, I, I think this is in response to Supervisor Wickham's question, we have not established priorities. We haven't identified what types of services we might want to purchase. We've just kind of said, here's an application. Anybody who wants to apply, here's the form. So I think that there should be that kind of discussion. About what might be priorities, what might be things that we think are needs or gaps in the, in the county that we, we might want to purchase a service for. So that's one thing I would point out, that we don't have to distribute funds July one. We, we could take our, our time for this. So I would just point that out, but there's also, when we purchase services, unless we're buying a truck. We probably want to report back. We've got a priority. I would think we would articulate a priority. And maybe then we would say, did someone brings us an application? What, I'd like to hear back from them. How did we help? Did we find a gap? Did we make progress? If so, how? That would, I think formulate what we might do next. I don't see any description here about reporting, reporting back. I think that's a, a very important element to our new purchase of services program. That, that's an important, I mean, I would point out again, significantly reduce the amount of money. We've actually got a target number here, what's in our budget. I also think we should be asking for financial, financial data. I think some folks who might be asking for large numbers. Maybe that is anything more than ten thousand dollars, maybe it's more than five thousand dollars. I'd like to see some financial data from them. I'd like to see a detailed budget of the project. And a detailed annual budget of their organization. I'd like to know if their annual budget exceeds a number. I'd like to see a copy of their audit. I mean, I, I think the idea here is our first approach to a clean slate. What might we be looking for to make sure that we're doing our due diligence after we set priorities? So I'm glad we're having this discussion, but I'm certainly some steps away from being able to publish. And Stella, if you've got anything, maybe your focus is always a little different than mine, but.
Well, I, I would respond first to say, or, or, or comment first that the. I, I've realized in, in looking at this, when we did this on Thursday, there's actually a signature page that goes along with this. It's the same, we're just proposing that. And, and actually that, the, the things, the, the items that you just noted are, are, are a part of that. Asking for their Board of Directors, their last audit or financial review that they had. So we will be requesting that. The contract for funded projects that. Was developed last year for purchase of service that we're using right now, requires a report out. From the, the project. So we're beginning to start to collect those and try to, to assemble that. Before the end of the fiscal year for projects that have already closed out or completed their projects. So, so we would anticipate that we would, again, use that information. We would, we would, we would be getting that information. And that information would come to you to see. I haven't received any yet, but that information at the back end. After they've completed their contract would come back to you.
Wouldn't we want to put that expectation as a criteria that they will be reporting back, whether it's at the six month point or whatever? And then also, I would suggest a checklist of some kind with some language that would be a, a new language for the county to say. Which is, if you don't use complete sentences, or you fail to actually answer all of the questions. We may choose to not move forward with your application. Because I, I think that there's some, we have some applications pending. We're not, everybody's done that. They've not answered all the questions. We may ask an audit, but the audit doesn't come. You know, a copy of the audit isn't filed. So I think setting that up as a kind of an expectation about how this program can be structured. That's, those are the things that I'm looking for. More structure to make sure that we're. This is, there's a purpose behind the program and, and we can articulate that.
I'm generally comfortable with those, those points and modifications to the application. I think they, they make sense. I wouldn't delay, that would be the other thing, you know, I wouldn't delay. I think funding should be available and ready July one. I think that's, you know, how we work. And so that would give those applicants twelve full months to, to complete their projects or their services. But other than that, that I think the points that Supervisor McDonough makes are wonderful and love to see those in the application.
I would too. I, like I said, I'd like to see it move forward as far as. You had brought up about which areas we would like to fund. I don't know that. I'd want to focus in on one, I'd like to get all of them in and then see where.
I don't want to do that again. That's kind of what we're living right now in ARPA.
I understand your point.
We let ARPA kind of, let's get those federal rescue funds through our applications, see what we want to work on next. And then turn our attention. I, I'm fearful that we're going to have another application process out there. It, it doesn't have to be rushed out. We are, I think, within thirty days of coming to some closures, maybe on. What are our highest priorities? I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're expressing our priorities. I think that we are coming upon them as we look at the application before us. Well, I like this, I don't like this, this is my preference. And.
But we're down to roughly three months. If we put the applications out today. And you're going to have them out for, say, four or five weeks. Now you're down to two months. For us to go through and decide which ones we're going to fund and get the, the contracts out before July first. But then you're crushing everything back down again and we're trying to dig out. I think we're better off to get it out there. And we give us some time to go over it because we're already backlogged on the ERP. I don't want to get backlog into this program also. Last year, there were people waiting until January for, to know if they were going to get their purchase of service for July first, which. And it's not me or my colleagues. I mean, the ERP came in, everything kind of backlogged everything. It was.
Much damn money.
Right.
Not enough money.
Understand, we have.
Matter of fact, we only got about a third of what we need, but.
We have a full year to spend. Our budget doesn't have to be rushed out the door July first, okay, right?
But these nonprofit organizations need to know if they're going to be able to.
But is that their application? That you've funded me for ten years, so here I am asking for more? Or are we saying?
No, they have to have the proper information.
Time to say, is that our top priority? Just because we have done it this way or given to that organization. What are we purchasing? What value are they giving to the countywide? I don't deny that they have need, perhaps. But I think we want to make sure that it's not, it, it, this isn't philanthropy. It is purchasing the needed services that we have that we don't do, human services. We don't have a human services department. That's why we do a lot of work in that area. But I don't think we need to rush to this. If someone's got a budget problem, they've got a budget problem. That's not on the county. That's on that organization and whether or not it's sustainable, aside from the money that we give them, right?
I understand that. I'm looking at, we're saying July first to June thirtieth.
Well, that's what this says.
Change it to August first to June thirtieth.
Well, it could say, you know, over the, in the next fiscal year and then see what happens and how things come up. I mean, I, I, we, the nice thing about this is that we haven't published yet and we don't have expectations raised. So now is the time to see what's missing and, and give ourselves a chance to do it maybe better.
I went through Ed's list of questions and I thought it. I thought it covered everything pretty well, the information we'd be looking for.
It looks a lot like the McDonough Foundation grant, but again, that's philanthropy.
But it's information that we're looking for also.
Well, one idea, I don't know if we've done this already, but if other counties have practices that we could learn from. I would encourage staff, if you haven't done this, ready to, to research those. So maybe we can learn. Being a few others asking similar questions to other counties, so they're probably struggling with the same thing with kind of the auditor's new statement about services that we're purchasing. But, you know, keep in mind, granted, this might be the first year we're trying to change it, but, you know, these are external groups. So we're not going to just, it's going to be more challenging for us to carry over their budget. And, you know, if you are only giving somebody, you know, ten months or nine months to implement their program. That might not be the best use of funds. And so generally speaking, you can fill in the blanks, Auditor Stella. Is that, you know, these funds need to be, and the services need to be completed or at least onset within that twelve month period.
Yeah, so I'll start with. This application that Ed developed was based off of the ARPA application. A lot of that ARPA application was based off of other counties' purchase of service applications. So I looked to a lot, what other Iowa, large Iowa counties are doing when I was looking at that. I don't disagree with anything on the financial reporting. I would like to see all of that stuff as well. And getting detailed budgets and financial reporting from everybody. It wouldn't be uncommon to require certain minimum standards of financial reporting at a certain financial level. So requiring a review or an audit, that's not uncommon. Once people get into funding of a certain level. We look at this, I look at this as an extension of what the county does. So if our departments are not providing a service, if the county itself doesn't provide a service. What can the organizations for-profit and nonprofit do for the county outside of what we can do with our, our staffing?
These are reimbursement grants. The services are reimbursement. They have to expend the funds and submit the billing. So if they. Purchase something that didn't qualify as a, or, you know, a service to the public, we would not have to pay.
Yeah, I think what, what we looked at when we were revamping the program in the last year. Was really to focus more on reimbursing expenditures and getting detailed reporting. Getting more detailed reporting back. I also agree that we should be doing some end of project reporting. So into, you know, if the project runs, we'll, we'll look at it this year. If our projects are ending June thirtieth of this year, in July and August. We should be talking to those organizations to say, how did your project go? Did you, did it? You thought ABC was going to happen? Did that happen? Or did XYZ happen? And maybe we can learn better for next time. What those are doing. So I think that, that reporting back out is really important.
I'd add that in the, the applicants that, that you have received a contract. None of them have voiced any concern about shifting to a reimbursement. Process that it's all pretty, pretty okay to work with, with all of those clients. I, I might add. Another thought you, that you brought up Supervisor Wickham about for-profit companies. One of the things would go along with that, that's perhaps different than when you go out for bids for a truck, use that as an example. Is that they'd be required, just like a nonprofit, to submit their tax return and their audit. So sometimes there's a disinclination for, for companies to do that, but I suppose that that's conceivable.
There is, there is an organization that we made a small grant to, through the Food Policy Council. It doesn't exist anymore. The Food Policy Council still exists, but the organization doesn't. So there is a real reason to just take a minute to make sure we're doing some basic due diligence. And not, we are not the IRS, but to get this right with expectations so that. We're doing it professionally and to the best, to, I think, good standards, right? Best practice. I, I like where we are. I don't think it's, I actually did not understand that final page. And with the budget breakdown, I would be calling you about your, your budget breakdown page. I wouldn't be sure what that is. Maybe your webinar plan would, would facilitate that, but I, I've not ever seen that before and I was very unsure what source C, source D.
Right, that, that is. In many ways plagiarized from the state of Iowa's application for funds for, for a lot of projects. So you, you're, you're right, sometimes that does require additional explanation or people to step through that. And that's the reason we try to be available to all of those organizations to help them through that.
Anything else, Jay?
No, no, I think we should just keep, keep moving forward. I don't know if the, the board wants to review another week of the document. I'm, I'm open to that because we've got some good comments here, but I, I wouldn't wait three months.
Do you feel you're going to have changes made by next week or you need two weeks?
No, no, you, you should not wait two weeks. I'd be happy to, if you need some refinements to the questions that you had there. Happy to, to do that and it'll be on your, I have it prepared so that you could look at that at your meeting next week.
Not on this. Stella and I talked about this too. You're going to be in the process as well, right Stella?
I would assume that she was, I guess I didn't ask specifically, I'm sorry.
And just another note, Supervisor Potoff, we talked about this last week. But just to, to more plainly say, the, the, the process actually touches a number of us as staff. When we develop a contract, we look at the application that they submitted, develop a contract of what are they going to do specifically for those? Items. You see that, you, you approve that contract, the organization approves that contract. And then when we receive. Request for reimbursement, there's some documentation of invoices or other stuff that, that they have to submit. Primarily, it's been me doing this, but I'll prepare a claim statement that shows that, the, the statement of work from their contract. As well as their documentation and an invoice from the organization. And I submit that to the Budget Director who reviews it. And when she's satisfied with that, she passes that on to the Auditor's Office, which also. looks that over so that we're trying to make sure that, that we're only paying for the things that were in that contract that was approved by both the organization and the county supervisors.
But actually there's three sets of eyes on it, yours, Stella's and Kevin's before it's and the contracts aren't necessarily changing much from last year's contracts. It's more the application that's changing a little bit.
Yes.
I'm, I'm satisfied with that. If you can bring it back next week with a few changes.
That's fine.
Ben it?
I mean, would be another draft to see.
Next was the discussion and possible action regarding ERP applications categorized under support of public health response.
I will make my motion to table again so that this can be done during a normal meeting timeframe where there's more public that would be likely to be present.
I would second that. The motion is second to table the action regarding the ERP applications until a day meeting when we have more public, any other discussion on that? The motion is second, all in favor, signify by aye at a table?
Aye.
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 Table that and get to that.
To adjourn.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Eric, it's good to have you back in the saddle again.